You have a father, we thank you for this day and the city in which we live, God us this evening as we make our decisions.
Amen.
Amen.
This is the regular meeting of the Noonan City Council, excuse me, March the 23rd, 2021. You have the minutes of the regular meeting of March the 9th, 2021, before y'all entertain a motion, we adopt those.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we adopt those minutes as presented, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye pose like sign, motion carried, thank you. Reports from boards and commissions, we have a couple of appointments tonight, Mr. Cook Co., you're first up with youth activities.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Matt Markham.
Second.
All right, first, motion is second to nominate Mr. Matt Markham to serve on the Youth Activities Committee, is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried, Ms. Jenkins, you're up with the Christmas Commission.
I'd like to nominate Kenya Brantley.
Second.
All right, motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried, thank you very much, I appreciate that. The next item on the agenda this evening, from reports from the City Manager, Mr. Phillips, do you have anything?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have anything this evening, under my communications, under new business, Mr. Phillips, you're first up with the consideration of an ordinance to amend Section 4-17, prohibited animals of Article 1, General Section 4, animals and code of ordinances.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you may recall, Mayor Prochim, Shell, back in 2019, actually asked us to research and potentially bring forward an animal, an ordinance that would allow the sheltering of chickens in the city of Noonan, and we did some research, we studied various languages and other ordinances, recommended ordinances. Then we kind of got to get to the COVID, where we kind of shut down things, so, Mayor Prochim Shell actually asked us a couple of weeks ago if we'd bring it back up for consideration, we already had it drafted. So here it is tonight for your consideration, if you pay attention inside of the actual written language, it is actually pretty, pretty simple. In that, in fact, it actually only allows the keeping of hens and not roosters, it does limit the number, maximum number of five. The minimum cage size, minimum maintenance, minimum distance off the property line, no commercial sales and et cetera, so the ordinance is in front of you for your consideration, if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Phillips? We do have a gentleman who was in attendance tonight, who checked that he wanted to speak to this issue, Mr. Ross.
Tim.
Oh, just, if you'll come to here, please, they won't pick you up back there, the mic needs to pick you up, you'll state your name for the record, please.
Evening, everyone, my name is Tim Ross, and I live in the Stonebridge community off of Lower Fayetteville.
Welcome.
May have answered my first question is, how did, I don't see a huge groundswell of support for this in the city limits, how did this 417 come to about, come about to be amended?
Mayor Prochim?
I had several constituents to ask me about that, that other cities did that, they like to know that, they really were looking for the eggs, so know where their food supply came from, and I think a lot across America, a lot of people are doing this today.
Okay, did your, do your constituents, constituents live within an HOA?
No.
Homeowners Association?
No.
Okay, I'm going to clarify this, I talked to our representative for Stonebridge, would this rule whatever supersede HOA guidelines?
Mr. Sears?
To the extent that if they have something that prohibits, it generally answers that.
Okay, so in our HOA guidelines, it specifically mentions no farm animals of any kind?
So while it could be permitted under the city's zoning, the HOA rule would rule, because anybody that would keep chickens would be subject to those requirements.
Mr. Ross, Mr. Sears is our attorney.
Thanks.
City Attorney.
Soon as, okay, okay.
Okay, is that?
I, I'm on a board regrettably, and I hope you're right, I don't mean to doubt your word, but it would cause some trouble in our community, I can guarantee you that, okay? Another question is, I may be showing my hand here, but heaven forbid this passes, who would monitor somebody with a six-foot-high wooden fence that you wouldn't know what was back there? How would that, are there five, are there 10, is there a duck, because I see this door, this is a slippery slope, again, I'm speaking, you know, for the closeness of the homes in our community, as well as the HOA and the issues I've been, there were chickens in our community, and they claim they, the city allowed it, and they found out they didn't, so, anyway, so how would that be monitored if somebody had a six-foot private, high privacy fence, and I believe they said 10 square feet per chicken, is that correct?
Ms. Phillips, will you address our monitor?
Yes, sir, it's really no different than, than any other regulatory ordinance that we have in the city of Noonan, whether it be the keeping of junk cars or junk in general, the growth of grass, anything that actually happens behind a, a privacy fence obviously does become an obstacle for, for regulation, because obviously the city of Noonan, without, without due, due process, we just simply can't enter into the backyards of a private residence, but, but there is, there is justification and rationale that where there is substantial evidence that we would have the right to inspect the properties, to see those compliance. So it looks as if it's no different than any other ordinance, sometimes there are some, some difficulties in enforcing, but we certainly work the best we can, especially if we get complaints about compliance, to try to determine if the property is in compliance.
Right, okay, I, just one thing in closing, am I over, do I have time?
No, you're fine.
Okay, thanks, I specifically moved to a city for a reason, I understand that the city of Noonan, the county, and, you know, out in the country is very nearby, I appreciate your statement about where I would like my food source, I don't milk my cows, I don't kill my own beef, I understand there's a little, you know, public sentiment about chickens and, you know, urban farming, but again, I, these, these animals, they are not the friendliest nor the cleanest, so, I just want to, again, my closing point is, I moved to the city of Noonan for a reason, not to live out in the country with farm, with certain farm animals, so, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate your answers.
Mr. Ross, I appreciate you being here, thank you.
All right.
Okay, any other questions of council or staff?
Just one quick question, and this is, I think to touch back to one of his is, who specifically would be charged with enforcing this, would this be animal control or code enforcement?
Well, obviously, I think there'd be some shared responsibilities, and both would have the, and, both would have the authority to enforce such.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, call, yes, sir, Mr. Sears.
Can I clarify one point, keep in mind that code enforcement and animal control would not enforce HOA restrictions.
Very much so.
All right, so we're not doing that, so, all of your, you know, if we pass this ordinance, any HOA that has similar requirements that there to not be chicken, then that's an issue between HOA and the person.
That's correct.
And so code enforcement and animal control would not enforce their restrictions, so while it would be permissible under the, under the city's law, by contract, it may not be permissible in Summer Grove, Avery Park, Calumet, Stonebridge, all of those areas that are under HOA restrictions.
Right, and that, that's the court system that they use.
And there are a lot of other things, such as, you know, no outside, do you say something, city doesn't.
No, you say you're right, okay, any other comments or questions? I'll call the question then, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Did we have a motion?
No.
No, I'm sorry, I thought.
I make a motion that we approve the ordinance, James.
Okay, motion is their second. Motion dies lack of second, thank you, we'll go on, the next item on the agenda this evening is consideration of a resolution to ratify the appointment of assistant prosecutors in municipal court, you had this before you, we did some, took some action last meeting regarding this, and this is a continuation of ratifying the appointment of the assistant prosecutor, as it said, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt the resolution as presented, any discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried, thank you. The next is a consideration of a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow duplexes in RU7 zoning districts, deny or refer to planning commission, Ms. Smith, how are you today?
Well, Mayor Council, yes, I guess, Ms. Levitch has represented this to us shortly after y'all passed the moratorium, but what she's looking to do is allow duplexes in RU7, now, she, her amendment, her application is to allow them as an outright use. In my conversation with her, my suggestion was, we, if we implement this further, we would do it as a special exception or a conditional use, and allow either the Board of Zoning Appeals to make a determination, as it would be site-specific, case-specific, and there may be areas where this would not be applicable, and also to give the neighborhood an opportunity to voice their opinion on whether or not they want this type of product in their community, but that's what is here for you now, for you to consider it, if you want to consider it, it would go to the Planning Commission next month for a public hearing, or if you don't want to consider it, it ends right here.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
I have a question.
Okay.
Have we had other requests from other individuals to?
Periodically, we get calls about different parts of the, of the city, and they ask about if duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes and the like are permissible, and sometimes they are RU7 zoned, and right now, it's not allowed.
I make a motion that we send it on to the planning commission.
Is there a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of second, so, the next is consideration of a donation between the city of Noonan and the Friends of Linky, Inc., you have this agreement before you, is there, is there any questions, or is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we adopt the agreement as presented, any discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda, unfinished business, is a public hearing rezoning request, RZ 2021-01, Jack Houston Edgar Houston Builder, Inc., for 16.5 acre, acres on 25255, Mary Freeman Road, parcel number 1111017003, from RS15 to RU7 for 46 single-family homes, this is a rezoning, this is a public hearing that'll open at this time, and it's also a consideration of the ordinance, Ms. Dunham, how are you this evening?
Doing well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So as you said, this tract is located at 255 Mary Freeman Road, it's between the entrances at Fox Ridge Subdivision and Ashton Place, the site is currently occupied by a single cabin-style home, and the applicant is requesting to build 45 additional homes with the cabin remaining. The proposed homes will feature brick and stone with a principal living space between 2,700 and 4,200 square feet, price points will begin in the low 300s, and the houses would include smart net technology and game day patios with fireplaces. The development would actually become a phase of Ashton Place, and the residents would have access to amenities within that subdivision, it should be noted that Fox Ridge and Ashton Place were actually granted open space incentives when they were originally platted, and so those incentives allowed them to develop with reduced setbacks and lot sizes, so although they are zoned currently RS15, their dimensional requirements are more in line with the RU7 designation, and there's a chart in the report that reflects that. And then also RS15 would allow up to 41 units, and the applicant is only asking for five additional homes with the RU7 zoning, so staff has completed an assessment of each of the eight required standards, and I'll give a quick summary of each. The property is bordered on three sides by existing subdivisions and Welch Elementary across the street, so as previously mentioned, the existing zoning would already allow 41 units, and the applicant's asking for 46, so therefore, staff felt that the use was suitable in view of zoning and development and of adjacent and nearby properties. In terms of adverse impact on adjacent or nearby property, we felt it would be minimal, the greatest impact would be additional traffic, however, the increase will not be enough to change the level of service of Mary Freeman, and the applicant has already approved 41 homes with the current RS15 zoning designation. Could it be used as currently a zone, as we said, yes, since it's already zoned for the use that they are requesting. Would the project cause an excessive or burdensome use of public facilities, after reviewing all responses from the providers, staff determined that the project will have a minimal impact on public services, again, applicant is only asking for five more units than what is currently allowed. We did include anticipated call volumes for fire and police to give us, us counsel an idea as to the impact of comparable-sized residential subdivisions have on service calls, the police anticipate roughly five calls per month and fire averaging less than one. Noonan Utilities indicated they could serve the property, and the Engineering Department report indicates the development would not impact current level of service. The school system cautioned that capacity is ongoing concern and asked the developer to provide pertinent information for planning purposes, which they typically ask. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the future land use map shows this property as future low-density residential, which it defines as four units per acre or less, the RU7 zoning designation allows up to four units per acre, so it would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The applicant is proposing a residential subdivision, so it would be consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning as well. Would the proposed use be supported by new or changing conditions not anticipated by the comprehensive plan, the city completed its full update of the comp plan back in 2016, and again, gave this a future low-density residential designation, so a rezoning for a residential subdivision with a proposed net density of 2.7 units per acre would be consistent. Staff does feel the project shows a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality, or general welfare, and the right to unrestricted use of property, the subject property is zoned already to accommodate 41 units, the applicant's only asking for five more, the requested setbacks, lot sizes, and density are similar to the existing subdivisions surrounding the tract, and in addition, the tract will become a part of Ashton Place, and the residents will have access to the existing amenities, since subdivisions with less than 75 lots actually do not have to provide amenities. It should also be mentioned that the applicant has agreed to proffer a playground for this site, so in summary, staff has found the development to meet seven of the eight standards. The planning commission held a public hearing at their February 9th meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval and with these following conditions, the development of the property would be consistent with the concept plan, pictures, and supporting documentation that has been provided as part of the rezoning application, the project would be limited to 46 unit, and that a written agreement with Ashton Place regarding the amenities and covenant restriction would be provided prior to the city council meeting, and then we have the proffered condition, of course, that they were willing to have on the playground, and that's the report of the planning commission.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham, now we'll hear from the applicant with regard to the rezoning request of RZ 2021.
Good evening, my name is Robert Hancock, and I'm here on behalf of the current owner of this property, Pick Parks and his family, and on the applicant, Houston Homes. You've just heard this application has the support of staff, it had the unanimous approval of planning commission, even with the rezoning, with the four or five additional lots that this would be entitled to, the average lot in this phase of Ashton Place will still be larger than the average lots adjacent to it in Fox Ridge and the first two phases of Ashton Place. So at the planning commission, we had several good-natured, very professional, current residents of Ashton Place show up with some concerns about one or two different things, and I'll be glad to discuss those if you'd like me to, or get into that, but I, I think they were all, you know, just curious as opposed to, and concerned as opposed to against, but.
They may seem to have been resolved, because there's no one here who has signed the signing sheet that actually indicated they wanted to speak to this issue.
Well, they were all very nice, like I said, when I, when I explained things to them last time, they seemed to have taken it very well, so maybe there is no more opposition, I hope, it's a good thing, I hope there's no more.
Okay, any questions of the applicant?
I, I would, I've received several calls from surrounding residents about this, what were some of the things that were brought up during the planning?
The two things that were brought up the most, there were several people concerned that the pool was not sufficiently sized for 200 houses, and it was, they all admitted, though, when I asked them, that they'd, they'd all moved into the neighborhood after the summer of 2019, which was the last time the pool was open, so they've actually never been to the pool when it was open, so it was a very speculative concern. The professional property manager of this property, who works for a company that manages dozens of neighborhoods, is here, and if you'd like, will speak to the sizing of the pool for the neighborhood, but it truly is big enough, the addition of this phase was always a probably, so the amenity center was, was built with that in mind. And there was one person, I don't remember his name, it was nice he could be, that just thought we were being greedy over four or five lots, and then if, if someone agrees with that, I'd be glad to speak to that as well, but I don't think so, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars we didn't need, need to, and I can demonstrate that very easily.
Questions of the applicant, anyone?
I have one question.
Yes.
The cabin, it's going to remain?
Yes.
What is it going to be used for, is that going to be?
It's a home, private home.
Okay, all right.
And that's the rather peculiar request of the current property owner, Mr. Parks.
Are you, are you going to, is he going to continue to live in that home?
No, he does, he has not lived in it in many years, no, but he built it, it's his sweat and blood in it, and.
It's going to be sold with all the rest of the homes?
He, and he knows who's going to buy it and live there, and he's content with all that, and it also preserves his pet cemetery.
Preserves his what?
Pet cemetery.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant? Okay, this would be an opportunity, thank you, Mr. Hancock, we appreciate, is anyone else who would like to speak for the applicant? Okay, Ms. Green, you signed up, you, you're good?
Yes, I'm here representing Jack Houston if you have any questions about the houses.
All right, good, thank you, okay, anyone in opposition of this rezoning, again, this is a rezoning request for Jack Houston Homes located at 255 Mary Freeman Road, this is a rezoning request, RZ 202101, to go from RS15 to RU7 for a total of five additional lots, so anyone here in opposition? So anyone here in opposition? Seeing no one come forward, then I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion from the council to accept the.
Can I get a clarification? There's a proffered condition for a playground to be located on the sixteen acres?
Yes.
So it's okay to add that to the ordinance?
Okay. Well, I was going to get to that after I got the report. Okay. Motion. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion of second to accept the report and recommendation for the planning commission. Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Nay.
Okay. You're against accepting the report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Aye for the report. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Attention.
All right. So we have a unanimous acceptance of the report?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Okay, so back to Mr. Sears' point. There was some proffered conditions, and you've already agreed to those. Is there, are there any other proffered conditions, Ms. Dunham, other than what's in the agenda?
The agenda should cover everything that's in the packet based on what they're provided in the application.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Then is there a motion to, on the rezoning?
I make a motion to approve with the stated conditions.
Second. Motion of second. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Nay.
Okay. And do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Motion of second to adopt the ordinance as presented. Any discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Nay.
Motion carried. Thank you. Will you put that ordinance on our next agenda for? Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Please. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. The next item is a public hearing. This is a zoning ordinance and subdivision regulation text amendments for consideration of an ordinance. Mr. Smith, how are you this evening?
Fine, mayor and council.
Good.
But just before you, we have several text amendments to the zoning ordinance and to the subdivision regulations. One of these text amendments is one that this body discussed at length last year, and that is in Article six and concerning the mixed-use or MXD development district regulations and including a work session. Then the pandemic struck. We tabled it. We now think it's appropriate to bring it back and go ahead and move forward as the city is currently entertaining several queries about the MXD, looking at different sites that may come in at some point in time. So if you have any questions about this, hopefully you've had an opportunity to look it over. We sent it out as part of the planning commission packet that was sent to you as a follow-up in earlier last month. And then also earlier in February, I sent you a copy, I think, of the MXD language along with the minutes from the work session we held in March of 2020.
Okay. So I would simply ask the council, are there any questions regarding the individual text issues? Clearly been in, as Mr. Smith just said, in our agenda this time and several other opportunities to look at these. Any questions or comments on anything we've got here? Mr. Alexander?
Yes. On the first one, allowing microbreweries, micro-distilleries, micro-wineries in the downtown area, central business district, and other select zoning districts. What is other zoning districts, select?
Okay. So what we've done, we've tabled through here to where we get to that section. I think it's, and I'll get to it here in just a second. I think it's towards. On page one-oh-six, we've referred, we've categorized all these micro-distilleries, micro-breweries, micro-wineries into the heading of micro-producers. And we've added, we're suggesting adding a definition for that, which will incorporate these uses. And on page one-oh-three, or I'm sorry, one-oh-six, you'll see highlighted micro-producers. And if you kind of follow that row along, you'll see we're adding them as conditional or special exception uses in the planned development commercial districts, the community shopping center districts, the CCS, and the general commercial, the CGN. We're suggesting they be allowed uses in the central business district, the heavy commercial, and the two industrial districts that we have.
You don't by chance have a map that shows where those are allowed?
No. The CCS would be pretty much, CCS and CGN are going to be along your major corridors, Bull'sboro Drive, the bypass, Ashley Park. Those would be areas where they could be considered under the special exception where they would have to go in a public hearing before the board is owning appeals. There might be conditions put on their operation, hours operations. There are also been quality development corridor overlay districts or building exterior quality overlay districts, which will have the heightened architectural restrictions for any new construction.
We have a map now. Could you show me where that is? Thank you.
This is CCS. This is cancer treatment center. This is Ashley Park. These red areas are all what we call CGN or general commercial. It's also included down here by across the street from the hospital. This is CGN along Union Station Drive. This is CGN, the front part of Lundy Pond. Again, this is the, we're now all parts of the fire station. That's also at the CGN. Heavy commercial is a little bit harder to pick up on this, but it's along parts of Greenville Street. It's heavy commercial. And then along Temple Avenue would be areas of heavy commercial as well.
Where along Greenville Street are you showing?
It is about where Spence Avenue intersects on further south.
So those two, next to the old Coca-Cola?
Right. There's some heavy commercial potentially could be used for a micro-producer.
So that's right next to residential?
There is a couple more.
And actually right next to the historic district?
Right. And we could make those special exception uses. If you have that opportunity, if you want to make that revision, we can make it before we go to revision. And that way it would give those neighbors an opportunity to weigh in on that discussion.
I can't see putting it in that area down along Greenville Street, right next to residential area. I just can't.
We can remove it as one of the areas that could be eligible for. I think the discussion may be broader than that. The fact that those properties are actually zoned, heavy commercial opens up a lot of other uses that you may not even be aware of, Councilmember Alexander. And the micro-producer may be one of the more, least, less intense. Heavy commercial is pretty intense. You're just fortunate in that situation that they're not one of those particular uses.
Right.
So what you may be thinking about is the actual underlying zoning more so than the use of this particular property, because there's a lot of uses in heavy commercial. Automobile body shops, for example, used car lots. All that could go right next to the residential, as Cleed has pointed out.
One of my concerns is if you start having some of these establishments, if there's a possibility for noise and you're right there on top of a residential area.
Every use in there.
I mean, typically those are the only ones that are in business after six o'clock. That's my concern.
Wouldn't that be covered when they make an application? And that's part of what you were saying, that they could restrict some hours and things like that?
If you want to make this, this body wants to make a suggestion or recommendation that we consider these types of uses as special exception uses in the heavy commercial, then yes, at that point, if they come before a board is owning appeals, for example, to get approval, we can make hours of operation an issue, you know, concern, and maybe ask them to make, you know, how they're going to handle noise, how they're going to handle these concerns. And also neighbors would be aware of the application and given that opportunity to be present to provide comment and to express any concerns they may have about such a use going next to them.
I'd prefer to see that, where at least the neighbors can come forward and have a say-so.
Now, that citywide or just in?
That would be citywide, Mr. DeBose, in all such zoning that's heavy commercial, similar to what we were proposing with the community shopping center district and with the general commercial.
Any other questions about any of the other text amendments?
I do. There's the neon sign. I'm trying to find it again.
The proposal to remove neon tubing from the overlay districts in the building signs?
Yeah.
Five, five-four-four.
Is there a size limit on those kind of signs?
They will remain the same as we currently regulate. There will be no proposal to change the existing restrictions on size, which is depending on the zoning. Like if it's a downtown, I think the limit is seventy-five square feet. It's ten percent of the wall they're attached to not to exceed seventy-five square feet in the downtown area and in certain urban commercial zonings. And then in the general commercial, heavy commercial, industrial, if they have enough wall signage, it can go up to a hundred-and-fifty square feet, but that's the maximum size of a wall sign.
You know, I know that people wanted the hot sign for, for, for that donut shop, but, you know, I'm not so sure that, you know, we want to have huge neon signs out there for everything else. That's the question.
Yeah, it's a material change. It's not changing the, it's just, as Mr. Craver mentioned, it's just releasing this prohibition that we've had, and it's only in the overlay districts. I mean, outside of these overlays, which is generally a small representation of your non-residential districts, there is no prohibition against using neon tubing or anything that emulates neon tubing, which nowadays a lot of people are using the LED product. It's a little bit less expensive, a little bit easier to maintain. Like West Side Fish Fry, for example, when you drive by Temple Avenue, it's an LED product, but it has the look of neon. So that's what we're suggesting, is we just remove this language that prohibits it in the overlay districts and allow them to compete as other businesses that are in the non-overlay district.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one other question, and that's a particular piece of property that was known as Peetmont Hospital, Calida General. How does this affect that large piece of property on Hospital Road?
In terms of the overlay, it's not an overlay district right now. So as you can see, it's just zoned office institutional one. Now, the overlay districts have this striping on them, and then some of them have this hash mark.
Okay.
So this piece of property, for example, is not within an overlay. Currently, under today's ordinance, if someone wanted to go in there and put a sign, a hundred-and-fifty-square-foot sign, it'd be all, they maxed it could have, or maybe it's seventy-five square feet, I think, and want to do it neon, there is not a restriction against it. But then if you have, somebody else has a large piece of property in overlay districts, they're not going, they're not allowed to do it. So we're trying to balance the playing field a little bit.
Okay. And we're not talking about this. We're just talking about the overlay districts?
Yes.
With this particular?
Yes. Yes.
One more question. On the second one, adding a clause that states fences in front yards or in the street side yards must be set back from the property line by five feet to avoid blocking line of sight for drivers.
We have a number of requests, and a lot of these come from HOAs and from subdivisions that have small lots where they have the corner lot. And in a corner lot, you have a situation where the front of the house can actually extend to the street side. They can go six feet up to their property line, which is oftentimes the back of the sidewalk, to a point where the front of their house runs parallel. And sometimes this will cause issues and problems for people that are pulling out of that street. They can't see what's coming. So our suggestion is they have to offset five feet minimum on the street side, and they put anything in the front yard offset so that it doesn't create a traffic vision issue.
Is that just on those corner lots that affect?
That's on anything of a street side or a front yard only.
I can't, I drive throughout my neighborhoods, and I've talked to people in the neighborhoods, and they're, I mean, no one has that problem with these.
Excuse me, George. I have that problem every time I get to some of the intersections. I mean, five feet's not very much, because you have to pull away out door to the sea when oncoming traffic is. I mean, I can show you where you come in from Carmichael Street to Clark Street. The sign that West Georgia put up, you can hardly see the street when coming down. Traffic's going pretty fast, so it's a very needed thing for a lot of locations.
Yeah, but that's a sign you're talking about.
Yeah, but anything that blocks your view, same thing.
I just think it ought to be on an as-needed basis. I mean, people put up three-foot fences, and you can see over those.
And the front yards, that's correct. But sometimes if they get into right-of-way issues where they're coming in there to do any work, they can, you know, where they sign a waiver, which alleviates the city the responsibility of having to put their fence back, and we have to tear it up. But in other cases, you know, on the street side, on a corner lot, where some of the houses have a fifteen-foot front setback, but over here, you've got maybe seventy-five feet of side yard that's blocked by a six-foot-high wood privacy fence. And in some cases, it can cause vision now. The other, another option is to consider is on street sides, making that material see-through of some kind, using wrought iron.
I mean, that's, that's what I'm thinking, is some of them are wrought iron fence. You can see right through them.
There's wrought iron.
I'm just, I'm just saying, go out and look to see. Let's not make this carte blanche, everyone, let's, as, as-needed basis is all I'm asking.
Okay.
But you can't sit there every time, George, somebody to make that decision, going out there, "Look, I'm just telling you, it's a problem everywhere I go." And I'm not, and I don't think I'm any different than anybody else when you drive, and you have to pull out to see, and you're almost out in the road.
And everywhere I go, and I drove around after seeing this, and I just don't see that problem.
I don't think staff would have the ability, unless you have an ordinance, to make somebody, if they have a right to have a wood privacy fence in their side or rear yards, you know, we cannot say you have to set it back five feet unless you have something that mandates that in the regulation. Because right now, we don't, we don't have setbacks on fences.
Right.
We allow them up to the property line, and we rely on the homeowner to validate their own survey. We do not require them to provide us with a survey when they come in to apply for a fence permit.
I'm just saying as an as-needed basis, because some, a lot of times, people are putting up wrought iron fences that you can see right through, and you're telling them, "No, you got to set it back five feet."
Well, we could caveat it by saying that if it's a solid privacy fence, either vinyl or wood, it has to be set back five feet.
What if it doesn't block any right-of-way?
Or it may block vision elsewhere. I mean, it may have to look at a minimum distance from an intersection.
I'll give you an example. On Lambert Street, neighbor on the north side of Lambert Street and on the corner of Greenville Street, they're looking at putting up a fence, but they want to do it on a property line, and it's on the side, and it, it doesn't block any right-of-way.
And but, you know, we had a neighbor from Madison Park that really was on Cliffhaven Circle where a fence was put up, and they have to pull out, I think it's Chickpea or something like that, to be able to see what's coming down. Because, I mean, there are a number of situations that, on both sides.
Yes.
And.
And that's why I'm saying as an as-needed basis.
It's just we don't have the ability to regulate that without some sort of change in the ordinance that gives us that authority.
That's, that's, Ms. Alexander, that's what he's saying on it. If he doesn't have the ordinance that creates the setback, then as-needed basis doesn't exist because he can't rule on it.
I mean, if we, even if you apply for this, and something, they could, as Ms. Dunham had mentioned, they can also apply for a variance if they have a wrought iron fence and they don't think they need to have it set back five feet.
Who are they going to go through, BCA?
They can go through administrative variances in some cases, depending on the extent. Or you can make that an administrative variance tonight. If you want to make fence setback reductions an administrative variance, it would go through Ms. Dunham, planning and zoning director.
I'd be fine with that. That's my suggestion.
Does anybody have an objection to that suggestion? Because what I'm, what I'm going to recommend here is that we take the two items that you've discussed and remove them from what we're doing tonight and bring them back to us with some clarification, because I think we've discussed them to the point where it's, if there was, if you just said, "I'll make that motion," nobody's going to know what that motion is.
Right. Right.
So that'd be the, the locations of the micro producers and the?
Those two issues. Separate them from what we're, the rest of, unless we hear something else, it also needs to be separated. And then move forward with the bulk of.
But so far, okay.
Thank you.
I've got one more question.
All right.
Article five, where it starts talking about demolition of structures. Since I don't have any context to that, is that somehow tied to the designation of districts? Or is that completely separate?
It is tied to the designation of districts for the certificate of appropriateness process due to the change in the ordinance that was made not too long ago for the citywide demolition of anything fifty years older. So this is just to kind of make sure this language isn't conflict or we have currently made conflict of what has been passed. And this kind of makes it consistent that if anything in a, and there certainly, like the downtown design overlay district is one, where if you do any demolition of a structure, you have to go before the planning commission if it's in one of those designated districts, regardless if it's fifty years or older.
Okay. So the fifty years and older still stands for the entire city, but for these districts, it doesn't matter how old it is?
That's right. That's right. Even a partial demolition still requires them to come before the planning commission.
Okay.
Where is that that you're looking at? Where is that that you're looking at?
Page 112.
Article five, Design Review Standards, Section 5-6, C6.
I'm, I'm reading this, says approval for demolition requires a public hearing before the noon in City Council and not the planning commission.
Oh, that's another one. Okay, let me look at that one.
That is correct. You're reading great.
So that would bring, that would coincide with the ordinance you passed earlier.
Right.
Bring it to you guys.
Um, and this will expand if there are any other neighborhoods that are put into the historic, National Register Historic District.
Right. Now, currently, the HRDO, the Historic Residential Design Overlay District, which I think would be part of the chalk level community that's being worked on now, demolition doesn't require special review by the planning commission. It would only be if it's 50 years or older would it involve the council.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if we, because we are looking at getting that on the National Register, once it becomes a National Register Historic District, no, it does not...
Well, once it becomes a National Register District, it still will not have any type of design standards or demolition standards, because the city in Newnan went through that process many years ago, and the national nomination does nothing for the city's permitting or demolition.
Right, but we've got them designated here, those that currently have those districts as...
Yeah, yeah, but downtown, yeah, this is in the downtown overlay district, but the National Register districts have, have no correlation to our, our demolition permitting. It's not effective.
The Historic Residential Design Overlay District shall include those properties located in the designated National Register districts within the city of Newnan, and said properties being...
I'd have to go read the entire ordinance to see what that's referring to. Do you know, Mr. Smith?
Because that's my whole question is, is it applying to these districts? Because you got me a nice little map of all of these districts.
Okay, let's separate, let's also separate that issue.
For clarifications, there you go.
Any other questions, comments?
That was page 113?
Yes, it was.
So Article five, Article five will be brought out.
Okay. Well, one thing Tracy mentioned is that you're talking about a couple of different things. Your historical residential overlay district applies to certain sections of the city, but it doesn't have anything to do with demolition standards. The downtown design overlay district is the only one that has to do with demolition standards that are different or have been different than the one you recently adopted, where everything citywide, 50 years or older, has to come before you when they want to demolish.
Okay, so that map really didn't make any sense going there then, basically.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
So that map really doesn't make any sense going there.
Well, the, the map is, the map...
Okay, um, let me, let me interrupt a second. We're gonna separate that, so that's a discussion for another day.
Alright.
Anything else?
Should we just table this till next meeting?
If I get one, if I get one more, I'm gonna make that suggestion.
Well, I did, I did have a question, if anybody has on...
Because we, okay.
On Article 11, the delegation of authority, does anybody have, out of a matter of principle, any problems with that and the way it's worded? And I'm not, it's not a statement about staff at all, it's just, um, as a matter, we are elected to make decisions.
Which one?
What pages?
On page 127, delegation of authority.
Well, we, we have allowed several administrative decision making processes.
So I'm gonna say this is mostly the s- street dedications, right, or the street acceptances?
That's right.
What happens with street acceptances? Once we go, we've, we've gone through the, the zoning compliance, the land disturbance permitting, the installation of oftentimes millions of dollars of, of infrastructure, developing the final plat, and we're putting a street acceptance in front of you that if staff says, yes, everything is in order, there is no denial.
Alright, so it should be administered?
There is no denial.
That's why I ask. Mr. Carr, is everything in order?
That's right. If it's not in order, if it's not in order, it wouldn't be in front of you, because we're not gonna put it in front of this body if it's not in order.
Right.
Yeah.
And this also follows up a sequence of events. You may remember not too long ago, we changed the preliminary plat process from one which involves planning commission review to administrative review. So by the time it gets to the final plat, street acceptance requirement, it's gone through a preliminary plat review by engineering, planning and zoning, new utilities, it's gone through a civil site plan review, then it's going through the final plat review. And so this is just a way to alleviate and kind of streamline the process a little bit, so that development doesn't get necessarily stalled, waiting for an additional approval, when it may or may not be necessary.
Mr. Mayor, may we just continue this to the meeting?
Yes, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Okay. Uh, there's a motion, second, continue this item to our next meeting. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the question. All of the favor, any of the governor saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign. I will, I will ask all of you to please take this text amendment and come to staff before the next meeting with any issues that you have, so that they can incorporate them, or at least bring them forward as suggestions from individual council members. That would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a consideration of eradication of notice to terminate lease agreement between the city of Newnan and the African American Alliance, Inc. We've had this discussion a couple of times. There is one person in the audience tonight who has asked to speak to this issue. If you'll come forward, state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
My name is Ayasad Idris Hush, and I'm here on behalf of the African American Alliance. Since my appointment in November, there have been lots of internal issues. However, we have overcome those things, and we're ready to move forward. We want to work together with the city to put together events, workshops, and activities for the African American community. We think it is important to the African American community to see us working together and not against each other for one common goal, because the history of African Americans in Coweta County is important. Please consider all of these things that I'm talking about before terminating the lease. I think it's important that we pay attention to what's going on, and we pay attention to how we can all come together with this organization, Farmer Street Cemetery, and the African American community to put the vision that Ms. Cynthia Rosier and Mr. Bob Olmstead had when they first founded this organization. That was it, short and brief.
Thank you.
And to the point.
Appreciate that.
You have any questions, please?
Um, I don't, I have a question, Mr. Sears. Remind the council of the date without looking in the agenda of the, it was a 30-day date from...
Correct, from, uh, week before last.
Okay. Um...
Yeah, I'm trying to find the date, but...
So what we ask in that letter, of course, and you, you read it.
I have not.
Okay.
I've just, um, I have not received a copy of the letter. I have just actually found a copy of the lease. Because all the internal issues that we were having, I wasn't able...
She was not a member of the organization that resisted with any of the information the Secretary of State saw at the time the letter went out. It later got changed, and that's been part of the problem.
Right.
Because a lot of people go in changing things on it. Keep in mind, the lease expires in June.
July.
End of July. And it has proved that there are certain things in there that have at least not been adhered to over the years.
Right.
So this would be a great opportunity to move to putting together a new lease with the appropriate individuals going forward. And as, as she indicated, we've just got noticed that there's a new group that's trying to get in. The bylaws are not in proper shape.
None at all.
They need redoing. There's actually nothing in the bylaws that meets the requirements of the Bible 163 with the way they're currently set up. So they need to do some work. They need to get an attorney to work with them to put that together, to make it a viable entity going forward, and one that the city can work with other than what's been going on the court.
Because we...
The timing, I guess, this is a good time to go ahead.
I'm just, the reason I ask about the timing of how many, how many days we have left, because I'm not sure there's enough time, given the 30-day clock that started ticking on delivery a week and a half ago, for you to be able to accomplish what you need to accomplish. And I, and I'm, I'm here to say that everything you said early on in, in your delivery, we all agree with. We all agree that it, that the African American Alliance needs to be there, and that they need to be operating the museum, and, and we, we have been the landlord all these years with, with that in mind, and, and want that to continue. We want that to continue. So, um, I'm, I'm just wondering how long it takes. And we're using this as a triggering device to set in motion the things that Mr. Sears is, is describing, to make sure that we get to a lease that is advantageous and beneficial for, for your group and for the city of Newnan, to provide to our community what you desire to provide. So we're not, I don't see this as a punitive thing that we're doing here. It's a triggering mechanism to put in motion, I'm repeating myself, to put in motion all of those things that we want to see happen.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm not sure that the time left on the, in the letter is enough, so I'm gonna suggest an additional 60 days on top of that, so that they can move forward during that period, unless someone has another...
Actually, I, I was gonna say that, you know, the renewal date is the end of July, and that we decide that we are going to, like the attorney said, draft a new lease that could come into effect July, whatever that date is, July 1, whatever it is.
August 1.
August 1, whatever it is. And that, that gives some time to work through your issues with an attorney, and to get that, that agreement worked out.
Well, and that's what I say, if you terminate the lease now, then you, you start with the black slut going forward.
Yeah, but then you don't have...
The concern that from a legal standpoint, and I can't speak for staff, is who is the lease with?
Right, that's the problem.
And, and, and so that, that's why we, we did it. You know, if council, you know, we take the decision, okay, to turn the keys over, because right now, we don't know who's going in and out, we don't know who's got keys.
Okay.
Staff has gotten complaints from other people.
My biggest concern is that stuff will leave that building, and I just don't want it to leave the building.
That's why I say if, if someone could turn the keys, the city could secure the building.
Okay.
All right, at this point in time, then negotiate with the new group.
But how do we know who has keys to the building?
Well, we have all the keys. We are in charge. We have everything. We're also...
I'm sorry, we've got three people saying things. So, Mr. Craver, you had a comment?
Yes, Mayor, any members of the council, we're aware of who has the keys. We issue them, we can change the laws at any time.
I requested them to be changed. I got a copy of the keys. Um, I also, um, we also in talks with, um, getting an attorney to be on board, where we've, we're revising the bylaws. I understand that the bylaws were a mess when I first came on board, and that was one of the first thing that we were supposed to address, but then we had a lot of the other issues that we needed to address first. And now we're ready to move forward. And the lease, it, the current lease is not up until the first, I mean, until July 30th. The renewal of the new lease, where we can discuss and all of the issues and all of the requirements, and kind of, I guess, renegotiate the lease, we can talk about that, you know, during that, those times. But giving up the keys with items that are inside that belong to the community would be a bit much, I think. I, I don't think those things are needed at this mo, I mean, at this time. If we decide, if you all decide to terminate the lease, then yes, we would give up the keys, but we would have to remove those items first.
If I could just ask a question. You said that you were appointed and you're on, you've been involved. What exactly is your official position with the Alliance?
I am the president of the board.
And see, we, you'll, go ahead.
If you, if those items are removed, I mean, where will they go? What, how do we...
I mean, I would have to get a curator to remove them and put store them in a place where those items would be safe. That is the only thing that I can do until we find another place.
Right.
And here's my, my suggestion here, is because I really don't want y'all to have to go through, number one, the expense and all of that to remove it, but also don't want to lose the public's trust that we have the best intentions for moving forward with a group and keeping this museum intact. So I would like to see us be able to have the items remain on site while these negotiations are happening, um, so that you don't have to move them, so that the public is, is aware that we are trying to move through this in a way that preserves that museum and not take it away from the community. Um, and then as far as access is concerned, we could secure it, make sure it's, you know, nothing walks off and nobody gets in, that doesn't need to be in there, which would be limited to staff only. Um, because it's an important asset for our community, and I think that it needs to stay right where it is and nobody mess with it while this negotiation happens.
Mr. Chavez?
This question is for Mr. Sears, and with what Councilwoman Jenkins said, if we follow that, are there any legal issues we need to be concerned about if we follow this route instead of terminating the lease?
Well, the, the only issue is who has access to the city.
But the ratification of this letter really doesn't address that, that's...
No, it doesn't, it doesn't. Well, other than, than...
At the end of the point in time.
And I'm not talking, I'm saying the facility, I'm not talking about the stuff in the facility.
Right.
It's the city's building. Okay, so that, that's what we're looking at more, preserving the city's building, as opposed to things in the building.
Yeah, but I think it would be a mistake if we didn't consider the things that are in the building.
So I'm, to the extent that, that you can make two motions, you can ratify the termination of the lease, but extend the time for vacating the premises as long as you have the assurance that, that, you know, the proper people will be accessing, as good as insurance as she can get, will be accessing the premises, and they have, she has part of a certificate of ownership, so that is covered now. And then if you want to extend the time, a separate motion to extend the time to 60 days, as the mayor suggested, to see if we can work through it, you can come up with a new lease.
And we can do that in one motion, ratify with extending the time to 60 days.
And that's what the letter says. The letter says that you deserve the option to do all of those without withholding your rights, if in fact you couldn't reach some kind of creative funding.
Because again, what we, this council wants is to make sure that the African American Alliance exists, provides the services, does those things in a, in the correct manner that, that they should, in the building that we own. So, um, that's...
Can you explain that to me one more time? I just want to make sure I understand what you were saying, your suggestion.
Mr. Sears? She wanted you...
Go ahead, and ratify the termination of the lease, but extend the time to vacate the premises for 60 days or until, whenever meeting comes up, within the 60-day period, to allow staff and, and the city attorney and their attorney to make sure they get properly constituted, and if they're terms of the existing lease, you modify and you can put a new lease in place.
Does that make sense?
It does. So you're ratifying the termination?
Ratify the letter, terminate the lease.
Okay.
But extending the, the time for the 30 days of the lease for...
60 days.
60 days.
Are we doing 60 additional days?
That's 60 in addition to...
60 additional days. So essentially 90 days, but this does not wait to arrive at an automatic extension of the lease or term if things can't get worked out.
That seems fair.
I'll make that motion if it...
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion. Everybody understand the motion? And I think I heard you say you... And I think I heard you say you could live with that.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what I heard you say?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because that's what we're looking for, is cooperation between the two bodies. Any discussion on anything, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose like sign. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on the agenda this evening? The last item there has been withdrawn, Newland High School withdrew that item.
Correct.
So is there, we don't have any reason for an executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, we're adjourned, thank you.